I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Planning Commission this Monday, October 19th. This is a regular meeting. Our first item on the agenda is public comment. The Planning Commission reserves 10 minutes at the beginning of this meeting for public comment, which is our usual procedure. The public may comment on any matter except for items scheduled for public hearing or public hearing items for which the record has already closed. Generally, the time limit for public comment is three minutes. However, the Planning Commission reserves the option to reduce that time if we have a large number of speakers requesting to speak. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to item number two on the agenda, which is Envision Eugene: Vision to Action Preliminary Draft. And I'll call on Teri Harding to begin the discussion.
Thank you. Hello, Commissioners.
Hi.
We're excited to be back here talking about Envision Eugene and presenting to you the full preliminary draft of Envision Eugene: Vision to Action. What that is, is a preview of the documents that we're getting ready to post and publish this week. And so today, myself, Alyssa, Zach, and Heather will be walking you through a preview of each of the four components and then having a discussion about upcoming outreach events for this draft. So it was attached to your packet, this lengthy packet, which we do not expect you to have made your way through yet. We will walk you through kind of where things are, how things are organized, and hopefully that will facilitate your review over the next six weeks. Starting with the overall organization of the document, we've got a table of contents inside that lists not only the four components, but the major components of the four components. And those are the community vision, the comprehensive plan, the urban form plan, and the action plan. There's a ton of information in this preliminary draft, as it is the culmination of really five years of work with the community. Community input, technical analysis, and strategy refinement have all brought us to this point. And as I said, we don't expect you to have read this full document yet, but as you do get a chance to read it, we hope that it makes sense to you, that it reflects where we've been, and clearly lays out that path from the community vision all the way through to action. So today, with our presentation and discussion, we're looking for your general reactions, heads up on any red flags or major issues that you see with the documents as they're presented, and advice as we prepare to roll this out to the community via the website, community events, press releases, and email blasts. We're very interested in words of advice that you might have for us as Planning Commissioners and as the city's Public Involvement Committee. Later, Heather will go into more detail about the public outreach events planned for late October through early December. And you will have the chance to participate in those outreach events as Planning Commissioners. Also discuss this preliminary draft as a group at a meeting later in November. If you're on the subcommittee, that'll be an additional opportunity to review things and give us feedback. Before we come back to you in mid-December to really discuss everything we've heard and then have you help us decide what to change for the second version that will then go through public hearing. So that's sort of our approach. And a good six weeks coming up here to have multiple opportunities to get familiar with the documents, the content, and to ask any questions that you may have of staff to help This graphic, which is near the beginning, shows how the pillars of Envision Eugene developed through the community visioning process in 2011 informed the 2012 recommendation. That recommendation, plus the substantial analysis work done by the Technical Resource Group, a lot of work on efficiency measures over the year 2014, updating of all of our technical information such as the buildable lands inventory, and public engagement around the urban growth boundary led us to council direction and information in 2015. So it's those two things in the middle of the graphic, the 2012 recommendation and this year's council direction on jobs, parks, schools, and homes, leading us to vision to action and culminating in this preliminary draft. I do want to direct your special emphasis to the comprehensive plan, the second component, that is the regulatory component of the overall plan, and includes the map of the urban growth boundary, expansion areas, and the line itself. So Alyssa is going to be walking you through the UGB adoption package components and the comprehensive plan. But first, a couple words about the community vision. Can find my correct notes. There we go. What we're going to do here as we walk through each of the four components is kind of give you a preview, as I said, and peek inside what's included in each of the four components. So as far as the vision, the sections are an introduction, a description of the community today, and this is basically data as Eugene was in 2012 or around there. So it's not intended to be as up-to-date as possible, but really a snapshot of the community in 2012 when we're doing all of this planning work. The next section looks at Eugene tomorrow and the vision for how we expect to grow and manage growth over the next 20 years, including the vision map. Then there's a section on the seven pillars, and each of those has kind of a paper that explains what the pillar is and what we're trying to achieve with it. And then the vision concludes with a set of four maps, and you'll find those at the back of the vision in your packet. So that's what's in there. We're going to move along, if that makes sense, to finish the presentation before we take your questions. Okay. So Alyssa's next.
Thank you. All right. So part two of this document is the comprehensive plan. So this will be Eugene's first only, well, Eugene-only comprehensive plan. As you know, we have historically shared with Springfield the metro plan, and that's covered both of Eugene and Springfield. And this is really an opportunity to create our own future, have a vision that is specific to Eugene, and have these land use policies actually be specific to Eugene. As Teri mentioned, this is the regulatory component. It is a legally mandated land use comprehensive plan, and that's the function that it serves for Eugene. Its foundation, it's really steeped in both the pillars and the statewide planning goals as well, so a nice balance there between the vision and the legal components. And it consists of an introduction to make it really clear what the plan is, how it applies, how it doesn't apply, 11 different chapters addressing different aspects of land use planning, and then a glossary for some of the terms that need a little extra help in definition. As we've mentioned before, the comprehensive plan is part of the urban growth boundary adoption package for Eugene, so the creation of our Eugene-specific urban growth boundary package. As you know, we'll have a number of amendments to a variety of plans, code amendments, zone changes, technical documents, and legal findings. And the comprehensive plan will have our specific land use policies, and as Teri mentioned, it will also have our urban growth boundary separate from Eugene or Springfield. These are the chapters that are going to be in this Phase One of the comprehensive plan. We're considering these are essential chapters, and these have all been reviewed by the subcommittee with the exception of the urban growth boundary map. And then transportation, as you know, that is actually Eugene's transportation system plan, so it's on its own path, but yet very much interrelated with this document. We also had a boards and commissions workshop that looked at the goals of these particular chapters, and folks had an opportunity to comment on the policies as well. Let's see. In terms of the urban growth boundary, I wish the color was coming out better here, but as part of this, we are adopting a parcel-specific urban growth boundary map. So as you probably recall, the current map of our urban growth boundary is on an eight-and-a-half by 11 page. It's not, you can't see tax lot lines. And maybe there's a little bit of a question about where it lies in some areas. So what we have done is using the factors in the metro plan about where the urban growth boundary is supposed to be, and knowing where it has been established in other areas, we have created a Eugene-specific urban growth boundary map that it shows the split down the middle of I-5 from Springfield. It shows the expansion areas in Clear Lake and Santa Clara, and then it shows refinement on any of those areas where it just wasn't 100% clear. And Sarah Allison spent a lot of time working through that. We've sent initial notices to property owners, letting them know what we've found, have invited them. If they have questions or comment, we'll continue to keep them in the loop as the adoption package moves forward. I'm excited that we're going to be adopting this electronically, so it'll be easier for folks to use. We will also be printing it on the same-size map as our zoning map, so it's also just easier to look at, and that will actually be the attachment to the comprehensive plan. A little pocket is our plan at this point. So we think that will make it a lot more user-friendly than what we have now. And because of how it's laid out, we'll also be able to, when we do migrate the plan diagram from the metro plan, we'll be able to color in the urban growth boundary, so to speak, here, and have our parcel-specific plan diagram and urban growth boundary all in one map. So that's pretty exciting. It will include the Clear Lake expansion area, the urban growth boundary there, which this is also part of the adoption package. I know you've seen this map a lot, but just a reminder, which includes the 3,000 jobs, the 200 and some acres for a community park, and the 54 acres for the Bethel school site. Those will all be shown, well, the urban growth boundary will be shown on the Eugene-specific map. I also wanted to point out that the Clear Lake overlay zone, which I know you have also reviewed as both subcommittee and at these meetings, is going to be part of what's put on the web this week, so that, and outreach to those specific property owners that are affected by that will also occur as part of all of this. Again, that Clear Lake overlay actually will live in the land use code, but there is reference to it in a policy, so to speak, in the employment chapter of the comprehensive plan. Again, this is the Santa Clara expansion area, so the new UGB here would show on the urban growth boundary map. And then these are the chapters that will be necessary to complete the plan, and what you'll, I'm sure you've seen in here, are the placeholder chapters. So each of these actually has a chapter in this draft of the comprehensive plan, but what we've done is kind of given a little intro text, pointed to where these may be covered in other areas, particularly the metro plan, what chapters to look there. And then the policy itself is really a commitment for the city to flush out these chapters, to create goals and policies, and have those adopted into this plan. And that, this is something that will happen post-adoption. That will be a second phase of the comprehensive plan. I think that's all I have at this point. We'll move on to...
Okay. Moving on to the third volume or third part of our Vision to Action Plan is the urban form plan. This is really intended as the visual complement to the otherwise dry, black-and-white text of the comprehensive plan. I understand the irony, though, in the materials we gave you, since the urban form plan currently is text-heavy with very little accompanying graphics. That's intentional. We want to get good constructive feedback on the text and maybe not distract with the illustrative component at this point. So that'll be changing in between version one and version two. At this point, what's before you is a historical foundation of sorts that speaks to the natural setting in which Eugene is located, the recreation, commerce, cultural components that really help identify the city, and then essentially transitions into these building blocks. That next section is an intentionally tiered approach that begins at the regional section, works into kind of these conceptual building blocks of building a city. And then, as you heard last week, with the explanation or the presentation around the Community Design Handbook, then gets into more detail with the scale, or, excuse me, the site design, or even building design that's embedded within the Community Design Handbook. And the handbook itself, of course, is laid out in a similar fashion. It's our intent to receive feedback on all of this, of course, but to especially kind of flesh out in greater detail the urban framework plan, those building blocks that lend themselves to a wider set of typology, so when we call out something like corridors, we can integrate very well with LTD's plans, RTSP, or even neighborhood plans, and get into more detail so that what previously maybe was just a text-heavy approach to planning at a policy level also has a very visually rich component that helps communication across different audiences. And that's something similar that we, you heard last week with the Community Design Handbook, seeing both of these volumes, both the regional identity, the urban framework or these building blocks, and the handbook as being an educational tool, a communication tool that kind of brings the discourse around development up to a higher level and allows everybody across parties or across a table such as this, neighborhood leaders, the development community, planners, designers, et cetera, to really work through projects in perhaps a project consultation setting or a neighborhood meeting and have that constructive dialogue. And as we discussed last week, this could also guide or provide input or direction on investment decisions as well around grant opportunities or even capital design conversations. With that, I'll turn it over to Heather, who's going to discuss the action plan.
Okay. So the fourth part of our four-part set is the action plan, which covers implementation and the monitoring program. So what is the action plan and why are we doing it? Really, the action plan is the tool or vehicle for turning the vision into reality, so taking our vision and turning it into action. The actions that are listed in this plan implement not only the community vision, but also the comprehensive plan policies. And there are several policies that will need to add actions to this document for down the road. But right now, it's mostly focused on the community vision and the pillars. It also has the monitoring program in it, and we'll talk about that. And really, so what it becomes is kind of a work plan of sorts, because both the actions to implement the community vision and the comprehensive plan and the monitoring program are essentially a list of tasks for us to continue working on. So this is what I think of as a living document. It's meant to be updated regularly, maybe on an annual basis, like our work plan or something like that. And it's non-regulatory. It's not a land use plan, and this helps us be able to update it regularly. So what's in the action plan? So there's three main sections. The first is the introduction, which talks about what the action plan is and isn't, which are some of the things I just covered. The bulk of it is the middle portion, which is implementation, strategies, and actions. So even though you haven't seen the action plan in its entirety until this packet of materials, it should look pretty familiar to you, because it actually draws very heavily from the 2012 recommendation. It takes the strategies and actions from the pillars in this document straight across and then updates them, what I would say surgically, so it updates them to reflect tasks or actions or strategies that were in this document that we've actually completed, like residential redesignation. And it's updated to reflect recent city council direction, like there are strategies now and there about urban reserves. So just kind of strategic things to bring it up to date. You'll also notice that there, for each strategy and action, there is a column that has the status of the work. And so because this is the first action plan, some of those things that I just listed, like the task to redesignate land for housing, it's complete. So we've just put "complete" in the action plan. Later, we'll just want to take that out because it's done. And then, and then things that haven't happened yet, that are still, you know, works in progress, either they're ongoing, so there's no, there's no specific end date because there are things that we'll be continuously working on, or there's things, there are tasks that we haven't even scoped out yet, so those are indicated as a status of longer-term projects, which just means the work on this is going to happen somewhere in the 20-year planning period. And then there are things that are more short-term. Those are like, for instance, the urban reserves project is something we're going to be, we're starting to work on right now. So that's what the status is about. And then at the end of that section is a couple tables which cross-reference the Envision Eugene pillars with the comprehensive plan. So there's a table that cross-references which pillars or goals, or values, I should say, which pillars implement the comprehensive plan goals, and then which pillar strategies and actions implement the comprehensive plan policies. So it's a nice cross-reference to see how we're continuing to build the pillars, strategies, and actions into our comprehensive plan. And we'll continue to build on that cross-reference document as new actions are added. The last part of the action plan is about monitoring. And so, as you know, we've been primarily focused on the quantitative framework for monitoring. So the growth monitoring program, which again is focused on quantitative, is inserted into the back of the action plan. And then there's a placeholder for the companion framework that is still to be developed, and that's around livability indicators. So are we really getting thriving neighborhoods? Are we getting thriving and walkable corridors and core commercial areas? Those kinds of things that are a little bit more subjective. So that's what's in the action plan. Now I'm going to move into public engagement. So we're calling this set of documents that's being released Draft One, Preliminary Draft. Sorry, my slide is a little bit off the page, but so all four, all four components make up the Vision to Action Preliminary Draft. And where we are is at the end of October. So right now, we're issuing Draft One, and then we're moving into a public engagement phase on the preliminary drafts. And so that is ahead of the formal adoption process. By the end of this week, as I think Teri mentioned, we are revamping the website. Sarah Allison's been working extensively on a complete redo, and the structure of that is really based on the four documents. And so we're putting a lot of the information that's currently on the website into background so we can really get people to focus on the four different documents and be really clear about where, where you can give input. So the preliminary drafts will be on there. We'll have a questionnaire. We'll have fact sheets about the different documents and some other key components of vision to action. By the end of the week or early next week, we'll be doing press release. We have, you know, over 500 people on our interested parties' emails, so we'll be sending that out, a social media blast. So all of those things will be happening towards the end of this week, early next week. And then we move into more what I think of as face-to-face public engagement. So the first thing is, is we're hoping to do some videos that give a little bit more virtual FaceTime explaining what the Envision Eugene Vision to Action documents are and how to participate. We have a neighborhood leaders workshop scheduled for November 3rd. And then we have what we're calling community feedback sessions. The focus of those will be educational, what are the four documents? This is a culmination of five years of work, and, you know, tell us if we're still hitting the mark on the vision that the community came up with. And then an opportunity for in-person feedback, as well as letting people know how else they can give feedback, because it's a lot of material. So these won't be the only opportunities for feedback. So you can see up there, we've got November 5th. We're still working on our downtown location, November 12th and November 17th. What's not up there is we will also have a display in the atrium on the second floor. That's something that we usually do when we do these kinds of public outreach events. We also will be going to other events that we just want to have a presence at. We won't really be doing a presentation, but we'll have a presence at them. An example is Family Fun Night in Bethel, which happens once a month. We'll be attending that. And let's see. I think one of the key things here that I just want to point out is we're going to be working really hard to make this relevant for the general public. There's a lot of information here, so we're trying to find what are the key take-home messages. There's definitely a comprehensive plan and policies that some folks are going to be really zeroed in on, in the UGB expansion. Some folks are going to be really zeroed in on that. But there's a lot of other things about our key corridor strategy, our 20-minute neighborhood strategy, the Clear Lake overlay zone, that we want to make sure that people understand that those things are kind of woven throughout all of these documents. So after the meeting, I'll be handing out or working with you to identify what of these meetings you are able to attend, because we'd really like Planning Commissioner presence at these, so you can kind of hear the feedback that we're getting at these meetings as well. That's all I have.
Fabulous. Okay. I'm going to repeat the three kind of questions I said at the beginning to hope to kick off your discussion. With this, we're hoping today to discuss your general reactions to the material, identify if you've had a chance to see any red flags or issues that you see in the content, and then mine your brains for advice as we begin our public engagement work. Anything to add?
Yeah. Would you just remind folks the input that you've had so far in each of the sections and which sections maybe they haven't seen?
Sure. So as far as the vision, that's been presented to the full commission. Comprehensive plan has been developed over the course of the last year, really, starting last December with economic development and through subcommittee meetings and full commission meetings and the boards and commissions workshop, there's been a lot of meeting attention on the comprehensive plan. Zach was here talking about the urban form plan and focused on the Community Design Handbook two weeks ago, and then has, in subcommittee, worked on the draft of the urban form plan itself. And as far as the action plan, as Heather mentioned, that one has been through subcommittee, but this is the first time the full commission has seen that in its current form. So, yeah.
Thank you, staff. We can begin the discussion, and I might add that we've also reviewed the Community Design Handbook, which was not included in this packet because it's pretty thick. So with that, I have Commissioner Mills.
Yes. I guess I would like to start by complimenting staff on the massive volume of work involved in bringing this forward. One gut reaction is, I don't know how you can make it less massive, but less massive would be good. Okay? Not to fault the work that's been done or the quality of the work, but this is huge, and I have question marks going off on that, that it's too huge. I have a number of things. I'm going to take one moment to mention the first thing on my mind. It has to do with the action plan. I'm on PC Agenda Page 104, Economic Opportunities, Strategies, and Action. And the table, Strategy One, Item C, I'll let you get there. This, of course, has to do with the new industrial lands for employment. Item C says, "Explore the feasibility of industrial land trust as a possible implementation Item C says, "Explore the feasibility of industrial land trust as a possible implementation tool." I may be understanding the wording or the intent here, but Teri, you, you know I've been grappling with trying to understand where we are on this, and I'm very concerned about the word explore. It seems to me it should be, first I'll ask a question. This has to do with our ability to, to make use of the wetlands or comprehend the existence of the wetlands and the employment lands and find ways to mitigate the fact that we're, that those lands are there. To me, the word explore the feasibility, the phrase explore the feasibility is way too soft, because I don't see how this works without a working plan.
Definitely.
Okay, so to me, this should be pursue, and not feasibility, pursue the implementation of, or some stronger wording than that, because without this, these lands may not get used for what they're intended for in any reasonable timeframe. If I'm, if I understand it correctly, if I understand the issues at hand. So that'd be my first question about that, that item there and the phrasing used. Thank you.
And I could provide a quick response to that.
Oh, yes.
And Heather, correct me if this isn't true, but I believe this is the exact language from the 2012 recommendation. And so this is pulling forward the idea of a new entity called an industrial land trust that would somehow deal with wetlands in the way that we dealt with property under the West Eugene Wetlands Plan. So I just want to let you know where, where.
That's where it came from.
Yeah, that's where it came from, and absolutely implementation of the large lot development in that area.
So maybe there just needs to be an expansion of this statement, but you get where I'm coming from here.
I do, and I get how that could be confusing, given where we are now.
Right.
Yeah.
So I've said enough. Thank you for the response.
Okay, no, thank you.
Staff may want to respond, if this is correct, to Commissioner Mills' first question about the comprehensiveness and the magnitude of the document. As I understand it, I believe that the comprehensive plan and the Community Design Handbook will probably be standalone packets. They won't be all put together like this.
Right, so we're exploring different ways to make that information digestible, but still relate all four components together. One thing that's still in the works is kind of fact sheets that help people do kind of at a glance for each component, so that's not been developed yet. As far as the comprehensive plan, I do want to say we've tried really hard to keep it skinny, and it's 34 pages right now, which to me was like, yes! It's pretty skinny compared to the metro plan and other planning documents, but I welcome your ideas about how to condense or make things easier to digest and easier to understand without losing the detail that we need to preserve. It's a challenge, for sure.
I have Commissioner Randall, followed by Commissioner Nicolletto.
Well, and I too just want to compliment staff on just the incredible amount of work that you've put into this, and it's nice to see it all in one place now, you know, instead of the parts and pieces. I just have a couple of questions, and they're probably more for Heather, I think, in her section. On Agenda Page 114, where we talk about addressing flag lots, and I guess, I'm trying to remember, did we address flag lots in the Single Family Code amendments or not?
We did for university.
We did for university, but we haven't citywide.
Actually, only related to secondary dwellings.
Okay.
So not citywide.
Okay, and I guess, do we have a timeline for that? Because I know certainly a lot of the areas, I think probably out River Road, Santa Clara, and different areas of town, that's a big issue.
Right.
For development.
And actually, I think.
Do we have that on the timeline at all?
There's been discussion about some exploration of that for River Road, Santa Clara specifically, since, so that's where.
That's correct.
That's where we see most of them.
Would that be part of their area plan, or would it?
That's correct. I would, I would prefer to wait upon the neighborhood plan direction before doing something premature.
Okay, I guess I just want to make sure we don't lose that.
No, that's a really good point, that we should probably make note of, of that. And that was, I reviewed that piece, so I'll get you some language on that one. Thank you for pointing that out.
I appreciate that. My second question is Agenda Page 132, and it's actually 141 and 142, but it's about the growth monitoring and urban reserves. And I guess, and maybe, and I think I've asked this before, but I just want to make sure that I completely understand, when we get into the whole growth monitoring program, and will we have identified urban reserves already that we've already vetted, so that if, let's say, growth outpaces our assumptions, we can then relatively easily go in and expand the urban growth boundary if needed? Or will it have to go through a huge legal process again?
You want that one?
Just want to make sure I understand how the urban.
There were two parts. One was timing, right?
Yeah, timing and just the amount of energy that goes into that. If we have urban reserves and a growth monitoring program, will it be easier?
Do you want to handle the timing? And I'll handle the second part?
Yeah, I mean, the growth monitoring program talks about doing a more comprehensive assessment of where we're at in three years, and then for every five years after that. But it also builds in, or whenever we think we need to do it.
Right.
Just to buy us that in case that timing doesn't work out. And so I think the growth monitoring program will help, will be helpful for monitoring and giving us the more data in the format that we are looking for it in. And so I don't, I don't think it's going to cause a problem as far as when we do urban reserves.
And I think, I mean, the growth monitoring program, as I understand it, would be in place, actually, probably before we are finished with urban reserves. But we'll have an idea of, I mean, what our growth has been and if we have expansion needs. I would never use the term easy and expansion together, but I will say.
That's why I said easier.
Yeah, maybe in a relative sense. It would be easier in that we would, those would still be our first priority lands to look at, and maybe because we've done some more comprehensive planning, and maybe there's more community acceptance or understanding. So for those reasons, it would be easier. I mean, we'd, we'd have a better handle on what our needs are. We'd have an idea of where we thought, the community thought it was best to expand. We'd still have to go through, you know, the adoption process, which is a city-county adoption process, so.
Okay.
I have Commissioner Nicolletto, followed by Commissioner Baker.
So some of my questions might reiterate what I said in the subcommittee, so for those of you who have already heard them, I apologize. First off, I just wanted to kind of echo what other people have said and say, this is fantastic. I'm especially excited about the wonderful engagement strategy that Heather has been putting together, so this is really, really wonderful. And I feel like I'm kind of your lowest common denominator, because I'm your newest person, so if I can kind of get it, then we're on the right track. So a lot of my questions have to do with some larger public involvement questions, and I might need two rounds to get through these, so I apologize. My first question is kind of just for staff to generally think about, is when you go through these plans, are they understandable in segments? A lot of different audiences are going to review these documents in different ways. So kind of thinking about these, each plan almost as a closed system, and each chapter almost as its own little system. So how can we reiterate things in a way that somebody doesn't have to navigate through other documents, especially because this plan is rather large, though easier to read than the many others? Another kind of question I have is, what kind of feedback should residents provide? I know that you're going to be doing the community feedback sections, but, the community feedback sessions, but does that feedback differ per document? Are you looking for different feedback on an urban design form as opposed to your comprehensive plan versus your monitoring program? Another question I have, and I feel like we kind of run into this sometimes here as well, is how do we show what is already in place and what is already part of the 2012 recommendations? And I'm not sure if there's a formatting way to do that, but that might be something for us to think about, just so we also don't have, also too, so people don't, you know, reiterate what's already been done, because we also want to be respectful of their time as well. If I'm going through this quickly, tell me to slow down. Also too, and I brought this up in our subcommittee, this is a common practice in websites, but to think about how people use a document or to use a plan in terms of a user journey. So essentially, when you have a website, you map out a user journey, and you think about how many clicks, per se, it takes from somebody to get to their, what they're trying to get to. And something to think about, especially if we're dealing with different audiences, is how do each of those people use the document? How do we want them to use a document? Is it going to be different for decision makers versus neighborhood leaders versus urban designers? And I understand that that's kind of a lot of, kind of a lot of work to think about, but it might be helpful in terms of how we display and discuss and ask for feedback. And this is something that also can apply to a hard copy as well. You know, how many page turns does it take me to get to other information if I need to find it, or also to contextualize where I am? And then my final question, because I'm sure I'm going to run out on time, is your in-person, your in-person public engagement strategy is excellent. However, a lot of populations, of course, can't always get to those in-person meetings, so how are you planning on engaging with those folks outside? And also too, if you are, so if that takes the form of like online surveys or things like that, I'd be really curious to hear what your strategy is for those, especially too, because I know that we really want to try hard to work outside and especially get a lot of those underrepresented groups as a part of this. So I think that's all I have for this round. That was a lot. I apologize.
Do we have a response, 10 words or less? No?
You could just tweet it.
I'll tweet you my response. No, I'm kidding.
Perfect.
No, I really appreciate your input on that, and some of those ideas are still kind of rolling around in my head, and Heather's, as we work more on the online strategies. So, and I've said this to you before, we really welcome your participation and help with that. I think as planning commissioners, we can, we can use you to help get the word out in ways that you think will resonate with audiences that you're familiar with, whether that's being in one of the videos, or helping with the online questionnaire, or being at an event in person, reviewing a fact sheet, you know, any one of those kinds of things. We definitely want to hit it from multiple angles, so I appreciate the questions and look forward to continuing to talk about them.
I have Commissioner Baker, followed by Commissioner Borowski.
I also appreciate the scale and the quality of the work on the draft. I'm going to comment on, or make some suggestions and some comments on various parts of it. I'm going to start off with the, the public involvement. In particular, I'm concerned about a person coming to one of these meetings and being overwhelmed by the amount of material. And I think it would be, it'd be worthwhile to consider reducing the scope by having targeted public input on particular, you know, each section separately as well as altogether, because that way you will get, you know, architects and designers and home builders maybe for urban forum and one of, you know, some of the others, and, you know, people that have an interest and a vision for that, and, and then you'll get the, you know, the neighborhood group of people looking more at the comprehensive plan and the action plan. But if you have, if you reduce the scope, then somebody coming to the meeting will not be over, as overwhelmed. There'll still be a lot of material there, but I really think that it would make more sense to have, and you can have a, a short, general introduction, you know, like a five-minute and say, then you're going to just focus on this, and you might have some meetings that cover all of it. The other suggestion is following up on my fellow commissioner here, when you get to the site, some people are going to try to use search to find things rather than reading a third-page document. And so you really want to think about having a good search strategy, which in the technical business, we sort of often call search engine optimization. And so there's some things built into search engines, they tend to look at the first 80 characters of the, of the, you know, HTML page, and so without any special, without having to do any special tagging, if you think about that and bring up, bring up the sort of the first sentence or paragraph, and you know, they'll show search and they'll show you that snapshot. So if you think about that when you're designing, the design of the page and the design of the document, so that the first sentence or two is really the most important, it's not a sort of a, you know, a lead-in and not really the gist of it. And then also thinking about, how are you going to do this search? Are you going to depend on your own search engine? Are you going to use Google or, you know, somebody else? So, but figure out a strategy, because someone who's interested in, let's say, historic preservation, they're, they want to find that, or, I don't know, row houses, whatever, they want to find all of the instances of that, so they can look at those particular questions. So I think you really need to think about that. I wanted to mention too, you know, we did these in，在，在，在，在 field compatibility standards. It was a very large and lengthy process. Teri worked on it. It took, it was over a three-year period, extensive public input, three separate subcommittees, multifamily, single family, I think it was subdivision was the other one I think. But there were a lot of those recommendations that weren't adopted, that, you know, are still lying fallow. So in terms of my next comment, I think that, and do I still have another minute?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I think it's important to bring some of those up and consider them, you know, at least say you're going to consider the, these other. And then I'm going to talk about where I found some weaknesses, just in general, not specifics, and though I have specifics, but I won't talk about those now. In general, I found, found that the pillar on protecting, repair and enhancing neighborhoods was weak. You know, didn't have a lot of stuff about neighborhood parks, traffic calming, infrastructure improvements, low-level lighting, maybe neighborhood commercial. In other words, if you looked at it in the scope of things, it seemed weaker than I thought it should be. And then the associated action plan, the same way, it's, it follows through. And I felt the same way about climate change and resiliency. There's really no talk about energy conservation improvements in existing buildings. I mean, I don't know how you would facilitate that, but, you know, that's certainly, you know, we know now that buildings account for about 40% of the energy use, more than transportation in the US. And again, the same way, there's, there's mention of distributed generation, solar electric, solar hot water, and going along with that, solar access. These are all important elements in a climate change resiliency, and then again, the associated action plan. And finally, just at a high level, I think there's some confusion sometimes with some terms and with, with the graphs that are applied to them. For example, housing affordability. Sometimes you have a graph that the housing affordability is this big giant thing, but it really, it's not really affordability, it's the cost. So it's not the afford, it's the non-affordability. Sometimes the, it's a difficult term. In the text, it's fine, but some of the graphs sort of make it confusing what you, what's going on there. And that's an example of a few places where you've got to make, you know, where you have a confusing term, which we don't really define very well, housing affordability, that we explain better. And I'm stopped there.
Can I do a quick follow-up?
Sure.
When you're talking about the pillars, are you talking about the component of the vision that goes through each pillar?
Right.
And then how that carries through to the action plan?
Yeah, right.
Okay, thank you.
And then in the action plan, it has the steps, or, you know, the components of that, yep.
Commissioner Borowski.
Thank you. For me, I'm looking at what my role is as a planning commissioner in far, as far as giving public input. I think that, the way that I see it, is the areas that I think we can be most useful would be in the comp plan and in the action plan, because that's kind of the weeds of these documents. And I think those are areas that, that we're more familiar with and that we can, I hope, give some, some good input on. So that's kind of where I'm devoting my energy. I did have a couple of questions from staff as far as the presentation today. On the comp plan, you talked about the parcel-specific map. I think that that's an area that's going to be, really have to be handled very delicately. You know, we've seen it with changing in zonings, and people are like, well, I didn't know my property was zone, was eligible for up zones. And once we go to parcel-specific, specific instead of blobs, that's going to be even more, there's going to be more people that that's going to affect, I think, because you've got to notice them, and then they're going to come out of the woodwork, and we're going to have to explain that to them. So I think that that's an area that I think that this commission should help you weigh in on, and hopefully be able to, because I think that's, as a commissioner, if somebody in on and hopefully be able to, because I think that's, as a commissioner, if somebody gets a notice and says, your, your metro plan or your comp plan diary or diagram is going to be this, they're going to come to me and I need to be ready for that. And I think all of us need to be ready for that, because it's going to be citywide. It's not just going to be somebody who's doing a PUD and it's like, I didn't know my adjacent property could build, you know, this and that. Second thing that came up for me was the Clear Lake overlay zone. I know a subcommittee's been working on that, but I would be interested to see, I haven't seen that, and if it's in this document, I'd like to know where it's at and, and when and where our ability to comment on that as a planning commission's going to be, whether or not the TRG has been presented with that. Those are some questions I have about that. And then getting into the action plan, um, I was just looking through it and I noticed that there's, you know, we're, we're taking strategies and showing what our actions are, either ongoing, longer-term. And I, and I'm concerned that it's, I know it's not a regulatory document, but there's this kind of, I'm worried about it becoming a loop, whereas it might be something that we're doing ongoing and it makes it into this plan. And then when that plan, and I'll give a specific example, I'm looking at it on page 107, uh, under affordable housing. So if we go down to, to item E down there as one of the strategies in action, continuing existing programs such as homebuyer assistance programs, which offer down payment, assistance for low-income buying and first-time house buying. This is a, this is a program that is through the CDBG money and, and those types of programs. And that's one of the committees that I sit on. So we're putting that in as an ongoing thing, strategy that we're having to deal with affordable housing. And I'm concerned that by putting it in this document, when it comes back to the CDBG committee, that is ammunition for saying we should continue this on, because it's in this document as an ongoing, ongoing thing. And, and I just picked this one out for an example, because that was one of the ones that was somewhat contentious at CDBG, because it was, the thinking on it was, you know, yeah, we can give $10,000 to one person to help them get into a home, but could that $10,000 be used to alleviate or help in other areas? And that, so that was a really big thing. And it was weighted this year and in the, in the comp plan, we decided, yeah, let's go for that. But I'm worried that now, next year, or when another committee comes along, they say, well, that's in our, that's in our action plan as a, and they use that as, as ammunition to bolster that, that thing. And I think I see that could be in other areas as well. You know, a lot of times in the action plan, we're referring to the Willamette Study Corridor as, as, you know, we're implementing this, this is how we're, we're meeting these targets. And I'm wondering how that would happen if Willamette changes, you know, if council gives different direction. And then on the same thing, if this gets adopted and, and council or somebody does decide we want to make changes, then this, not a regulatory thing, but it's, it's got more weight. So I'm worried about that circular aspect of it. So those are some of my comments.
Um, I, okay. Clear Lake? Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, in relation to the Clear Lake overlay, you, this body received a couple of updates throughout the spring and we took, we brought the most recent version of the code. Commissioner Mills, you might remember off the top of your head, August perhaps?
Sounds right, yeah.
Earlier mid-August?
There's been at least once, once in the last couple of months.
Okay. So Commissioner Borowski, I can get you a copy of the date and everything for, for your review, and I'm happy to meet with you offline if you'd like to talk through anything in more detail. But that will be incorporated as part of the overall package. It's part of this rollout to the public over the next two months. So it's not as, so it's not included in this packet, but it will be part of the, the public materials.
And then one other, one other comment. So in our packet, in some, in some areas, there were references to attachments and the attachments aren't here. And so it's tough to give input on items that refer to attachments when the attachments aren't there. And I know it's a big, it's a big thing, but I think for this body, we're used to looking through those things and that would be helpful to me to see those, especially the monitoring commit, the monitoring report had, I think, eight separate attachments and, and they weren't there.
Yeah, we indicated that they wouldn't be included here yet, but they will be in the materials that go out for our public review.
One more note about the Clear Lake. We're planning a special mailing to the residents and nearby property owners and residents of that area, because it's one of the only places we're expanding their green growth boundaries. We're working through the plan for noticing and, um, information right now, but I wanted you to know that we were planning a specific letter and mailing to that area and also the Santa Clara Park expansion area. With regards to the action plan, this is, I appreciate your comment, and this is one of those things where, um, it's definitely intended to be a working document, as you know, non-regulatory, but it does reference work being done throughout the city. And so we're, we're having internal conversations with housing, transportation, sustainability, neighborhoods about coordination, kind of to your point. How does our work in planning interact with the work of other committees and boards? How do we reflect that in our plan without hanging anybody else up? Or we certainly don't want to be predetermining anything within a document where we don't have that authority. So I think that's something we're going to have to keep, keep looking at. And this is our first time, you know, with an action plan, so we'll try to get it right, but we may need to adjust as we go.
Yeah, and on that note, I, you know, I was trying to think of other ways to say this, um, you know, for some of these things where the program is going on through a different department, we could just put that. We could say, see, you know, Eugene Springfield Consolidated Plan or see the Transportation System Plan, you know, instead of putting a status. But that, I mean, yeah, it would be interesting to hear if you, you know, as we're getting comments from you guys down the road, if there's different ways to include this status, we can definitely do that. It might also be worth adding a statement in here that just recognizes that some of this crosses over other program areas. And so decisions about how those programs continue are made through those departments and things like that.
And I appreciate it. I think it looks good. And the one thing that, that you did say in yours that I was a little apprehensive about was, was that once something was completed, it would drop off. For me, instead of dropping off, I would rather have a completed thing next to it so that you can look back historically, rather than just say, oh, we did that, it dropped off. You know, the action plan, you know, completed, maybe a better way to go for that for me. You know, I would like to see how, over the, over the length of the planning period, you know, oh, we checked, bing, checked, bing, you know, instead of just like, it drops off.
Okay. In conclusion of round one, I'd just like to, not to beat this to death, but I did have some questions on the action plan. I, I understand, I'll just say some things. I think it's going to be a standalone document. I understand that it may be updated periodically, and my own concern is that it would not be viewed as sort of like a SIP. In other words, no, that's not in our action plan, so we can't do that. And so those are my three things. Or is that right or wrong in what I stated?
The absence of an item on there wouldn't preclude us from doing it, so that's good.
Okay.
But that, I think, was your third question, so remind me what the first two were.
Well, basically, is this as a standalone document?
Yeah. So the, the action plan and the comprehensive plan are both intended to be user-friendly in the way that we recognize you may want them in a binder, for example, and three-hole punch them, and we might have to replace pages over time. So yes, they will be separatable in their final public, published format, so that you can use them as a standalone document.
And the updating, I asked because is it updating specifically or is it updating part of the monitoring program which has timeframes?
So about the action plan?
Yeah.
How we plan to update that? I don't think we have it completely figured out yet. It could be that it gets updated annually as part of the planning division and planning commissions' work plan annual kind of review.
Okay.
But, but we haven't set that in stone yet.
Okay. Thank you. We'll begin round two. I have Commissioner Randall, followed by Commissioner Baker.
Thank you. Two, I think, quick comments and then just one question. On the definitions for affordable housing, housing affordability and low-income housing, thank you. I think they're well done. I think they make it very clear as you go through this document, what we mean when we say affordable housing, what we mean when we say housing affordability, and what we mean when we say low-income housing. So I think that was very well done. I know that's been something I've been hoping would, would be in there for, for some time. Second comment is on the parcel-specific electronic comp plan layout. I know it may, as Commissioner Borowski said, generate some issues, probably just along the edges, I think, where the, where the blob.
Right.
But I will be so glad to get away from the blob map, that it's only valid at 11 by 17. I'll be, it'll be well worth whatever we have to deal with to get there. So I think that's a good thing. And then my actual question is related to the policies. Alyssa, you'd mentioned that the policies will come after this in the comp plan, where we have some of the action. Where will the policies originate? Will that be?
Are you talking about the placeholder chapters or what policies?
You, you had mentioned early on about getting the plan put together and then some of the policies that support that would come later. And I'm trying to remember now how that's.
Remember what context?
Yeah, I'm trying to remember the context. So I just made a quick note.
I think that's the placeholder chapters that we, we added, they each have a policy in them that says we will come back and develop goals and policies. And I think we'll start at the same place we did for these, is, is looking at all of the work and vision, Eugene. I think a number of these are probably going to require us to go a little broader in terms of, of getting some more community feedback. I think Commissioner Baker mentioned those happen to be the pillars with the least amount under them already, neighborhood livability and climate. And so I think that those, we're going to have to, to get more information, more feedback.
Okay. Thanks.
I have Commissioner Baker, followed by Commissioner Mills.
I'm going to continue again with some, oh, it's loud, some general, some general comments again. About the website this time, this first one is, it's, I assume it's, you're planning on having exploded content, so not PDFs on the website. But I, I assume that that would be the case, because that way someone can read it online and not, yeah. And let me back up. If you, if you look at Portland's site, Portland has all its content online. I can go and search for a chapter or whatever in their, you know, in everything they have, it's online. But I can also download, you know, a chapter, you know, a code like the multifamily housing code or anything you want as a separate PDF. And I think that should be the target of the way you do this site too. Should be all online. And the advantage of being all online is that way you can have, in a PDF, you can't have links. You know, links don't work. You've downloaded a PDF and print them. But with, pardon?
We have been able to.
Well, if you look at it online, but if you download it and print it, it's useless, okay? And that's the way a lot of people use PDFs. In other words, if you're reading it online, but when someone's reading it online, then you can have, you could even have, for example, an example of what, uh, the previous commissioner mentioned about these terms, you could have that little word highlighted, so if you hover over it, it actually shows you the glossary definition. But you could have links within the document and also between documents online. And so if someone, if someone wants to read the document, you know, pieces they can, but then they can get redirected by the links to something else where you're talking about something else. So anyway, then I wanted to talk about some of the, a little more specific, the wording that Commissioner Borowski was complaining about. I think you could use terms like continued programs similar to the, you know, low-income rental housing program that does this, this and this. So you, you aren't saying specifically that you would continue that, but you, you're going to try to continue some programs in that arena. And the same way, as an example, you could say, review recommendations from the incompatibility standard study to consider for adoption. In other words, there's some wording that you could use that would show that you have an anticipated, um, action plan item to least consider these and, and, you know, maybe not exactly in the plan that, in the form that they've previously been adopted and implemented, what Commissioner Borowski said, but in some other form. And I think that would be a, a good way of, of looking at some of the wording, and I'll stop there, but these are general.
I have Commissioner Mills, followed by Commissioner Nicoletto.
Yes, I'm just having a question about some terminologies here related to neighborhood planning and area planning. I'm looking at PC Agenda, page 115, Strategy 4. Let's create neighborhood plans to address unique situation impacts on different neighborhoods. We use the term neighborhood plan there. And then when we go down to the strategies, we don't use it, except in the context, we don't use it after that. Like it's not in the strat, it's not in the actions, but it's mentioned in the strategy. So as I read this, I, I read this to say we're going to supplant neighborhood plans with area plans, and then my question is, are those different than neighborhood plans? So a little clarity here and better linkage between the strategy and the actions, I think, would be helpful.
Thank you.
I have Commissioner Nicoletto, followed by Commissioner Borowski.
So I just actually have a quick question about monitoring. I'll wait till you're done writing, though. It's like a race. Just going to filibuster until you look at your. I've always wanted to do a filibuster, so here's my chance. Can I filibuster with writing? I'm still writing. If you wanted me to really filibuster, I'd just tell you my thoughts on the new Star Wars movie. So my question relates to monitoring. And I guess I, I'm, I'm kind of having trouble going through it, and I, I guess my first question is, is our assumption that the system we're looking at, is it, are we looking at an open or closed system?
Keep going with your question.
So I guess, you know, looking at the kind of, especially particularly the quality, the quantitative and the kind of modeling that we're looking at, I guess I, I feel like I can't really comment on the monitoring question until I have that answer. So as opposed to a s, open system, or sorry, as opposed to a closed system where you know people's patterns and it's very predictable, or are we looking at an open system where we're kind of leaning more on a like scenario planning approach and it's a, a bit more open to possible influences by land use policy and et cetera? And so I guess, you know, looking at that, I was kind of, I felt that I couldn't really comment until I knew how we were looking at the system and if we were looking at, you know, it in an open or closed fashion. Does that make a bit more sense?
Well, I mean, the way that we have it structured right now is that we'll be collecting the data. And then if our results are coming up differently than what we had projected, and we would have to determine, which hasn't been done yet, what that benchmark is for too different or what that trend is that is too different than what we assumed before. And then figuring out whether or not that's an issue or not, even if it is too different, because some assumptions don't really have a very big impact, even if they, they come, even if they're happening differently. So you have to kind of do all of that first before you get to anything like, okay, now we think we have a problem and we want to do some scenarios to see, or we think we may have a problem and now we want to do some scenarios to see if we really do have a problem. So I'm not sure if that's getting at your question, but that's kind of. So I'm not sure if that's getting at your question, but that's kind of the thinking behind it, is that there's several kind of check steps to see, to see if we have an issue before we do any sort of scenarios.
Yeah, so that does answer my question. I was curious as to how, what kind of modeling you were going to be looking at and how that would lead to your monitoring. It sounds like we're going to be working with a closed system.
Yeah, we have, we have a program that we can kind of feed different estimates into and see what the outcome is. So we'll be relying on that program and then adjusting that program as needed.
Okay.
Another answer to that might, or this might flesh it out a little bit more. The Technical Resource Group has been working on this for a number of years. And one of the recommendations is to establish a technical advisory committee that will basically monitor the monitoring program. And they will have some crossover with the livability indicators as well, which is the more qualitative, subjective aspect of the work. And there will be interplay between those two, which I think it's such a question of testing different policy inputs into our
Yes.
quantitative outcomes.
Yeah, it somewhat answers, it gets me a little bit closer to the question I have. And then my other question was in regards to program evaluation. And I know that that still is being fleshed out. But I actually wanted to suggest, as part of doing kind of a formative evaluation, because I know that we're missing, we still don't know what the monitoring program's going to look like entirely, and we're still missing kind of some of those things. I wanted to suggest that maybe something we could put together is a system diagram. And I would really love to see, kind of just having that mapped out in a logic model. What does it look like with our inputs and our outputs? And how do our assumptions play into that? I think that might be something that's really helpful for both the TAC and for the Livability Indicators Group to have, because it kind of helps us actually visually display, you know, this is kind of how we're thinking through this process and then how that can relate to us doing more of a formative evaluation. But yeah, thank you for answering those questions.
I have Commissioner Borowski.
Thank you. Piggybacking on that, I think that the, the monitoring program has some really good checks and balances in it. And I think that that's real important, both for the, just to be able to let the public know that it's, you know, data-driven and not political, kind of like the, the leading up to this has been, you know, it's take the data and look at it. And one of the things that I think is real important is that it will be a yearly report that comes out, even though the check-in is at three years and then every five years, you know, there's going to be a report to the, hopefully to the policymakers, you know, that this is what we, what we've seen. And I think that the makeup of that group is, you know, from what I've seen may happen with it, you know, that hasn't all been fleshed out, but I think it will be very representative. And I also like the fact that in the monitoring plan, you've actually identified some things that might be, you know, if a big, a huge multifamily development gets put in there, you know, that could, one big project could skew, you know, the numbers and being able to say, okay, let's take that out or let's, let's consider that, not just use just the straight raw data, I think is very important. The other question, I think I would have it, it would be for Robin, is there's a fair amount of monitoring and updating that is involved in this plan. You know, the action plan has, we're asking to do updating. There's a whole section on monitoring. Is there going to be budget, is that going to fit into your budget? And are you going to be able to have the support from the, from the city manager to have the people that will do that? I mean, I think that that's important. If we say, yeah, we're going to monitor this and we're going to do area plans for River Road and, you know, they budgeted River Road and university areas, we've got that covered. But then the next thing was every two years, we want to do another neighborhood or whatever. And this comes down to staff time and, you know, if, if things keep going the way that they are, which is in a positive aspect, I think, you guys have seen it, how busy you've gotten. Is there a commitment from the city manager to make sure that there's going to be bodies to do this monitoring? And if not, do we need to advocate for that?
That's a great question. Thanks for asking. So you're correct that the items in the action plan, I think, represent an expansion of the work plan. It's, it kind of boils down to a couple of things. One is a question of resources, of course. The other is a question of how quickly we're actually able to accomplish all this. So you could take existing resources and just spread those things out over time and accomplish them, or you could add more resources and accomplish them in a shorter period of time. So what we've been doing through our budget process is trying to identify and flag for folks that if the community wants to accomplish this body of work within the planning period, which would be roughly 20 years, well, we've, we've got to step it up because there's more than 20 years worth of work to be done, right? That's kind of how it shakes out. So I think that's a long way of answering your question by saying, yes, I believe in order to do all this, we're going to need to maybe resource it more than we have currently. I think thus far, there's been a commitment to do that. I think council just recently showed a commitment to getting the urban reserves done and a recognition that it can't be done with existing resources and do the other things at the same time. So I think that's a real positive sign that, that people get it, right? Because these are the folks who are doing the work, right? And, you know, unless, until we clone, clone the smart experience people that we have, we either need to train up new ones or we need to spread it out over time. So. See if there's a different answer to that. It is actually, the, there are some things embedded in the, in the action plan that we just absolutely have to do, that we are committing to do. For example, the monitoring program and these periodic check-ins. So we didn't used to have that. It used to be that you wrote a comprehensive plan or established a UGB and then you could go off and do other things for 15 years or something and then come back and do it again. Not happening anymore. It's much more of an ongoing process. So, yeah, that's, that's a big addition. I'd also like to point out another thing, and I think I've mentioned this at commission before, but in the, sort of in the division of labor that we have within planning, we do the short-range application review, of course, and then we do a lot of this long-range planning. And some of our key staff from short-range were sort of reassigned to do this long-range work. So we've been really focused on that following the economic recession because there was an opportunity to do so. Now that things are starting to ramp back up with the short-range planning, we are faced with a challenge of how to resource those also ongoing necessary, very time-sensitive activities. So we're looking at that and working on it.
Right. And, I mean, the reason that I bring it up is because I'm familiar with how the budgeting process works. And, you know, obviously, citywide, there's a, everybody, all the departments will come forward with their needs and wants. And I just hope that, that the city manager's office recognizes the increased load that is going to be happening here. And if we want to get it done, keeps that in mind as he's, as he's looking at all these different asks. I want a fire truck and I want to, you know, I want two, two more officers for downtown. Well, you know, planning also would, would be one of the ones that I think has, has taken cutbacks in the past to help balance the budget. And I think it's time to let them know that it's needed.
Yeah, thank you. We'll do the best we can to outline the trade-offs and then feed it on up to the execs in the budget committee to make those choices.
Thank you.
Well, it's good to hear that we won't need to budget more office shelving to store these plans and documents for 15 years. Thank you. That's great. I'll wrap up the second round. I just had one question on the parcel-specific map on land use, which I know will be done later. Is there going to be a parcel-specific overlay of the overlays? And is, and I'm not a technical person, but all the technical questions, is there a way to do that on the website that you can actually overlay it? I know in the old days, you could project up, let's say, a land use map and then take a clear thing with it on it and lay it over and you could see what the overlays are actually on the land uses where you may live, which is always a question people have.
I would say that in general, we're trying to bring more specificity to what your designation is and what your zoning is. And so we haven't gotten, you're kind of at the neck, you're past the parcel diagram and now you're talking about zoning and overlays. But we'll put that on our radar as part of just in general, that whole package of making it clearer for people. I can't answer the question about the, the website, but
Okay.
but we'll put it on our list of things.
Can I jump in on that?
Sure.
There is a portion of the city website where you can go and put in a tax map and so you can get the actual parcel. And it will give you the zoning and the plan overlay. And it has a link to the code section related to that. So that's already there. And so I would think as this gets updated, it just, if there's any designations that change, it would just be part of that.
My thought was on visual, not, not something that would list it. When the people talk to me and they say, well, we live in this neighborhood and it's all zoned this, well, there might be two, if you look at it, there might be a water lay thing over here, there might be puzzle out here.
It shows that. It shows, it shows the immediate area around it. Yeah, I can, I can send you the link.
Like I told you, I was not technically competent, so I don't know that.
I use it in my business a lot.
All right. We'll begin the next round with, I believe Commissioner Baker had his hand up first.
Sure. I was talking, going to talk this time about monitoring as well. And I'm going to talk about two areas. One of them is partnerships. And I think in the area for qualitative data, it really makes sense to see if you can try start some discussions now for partnerships, particularly say with the UVO. You have the Planning and Public Policy and Management Department, PPM. You've got the Architecture and Landscape, Architecture and Historic Preservation Department. You know, you can sort of negotiate some informal agreement now that, you know, maybe some of these departments might offer a workshop class where they do some sort of, you know, qualitative study for you or in the case of historic preservation, maybe it's more quantitative. But the point is that we have some resources here. We should try to use them and maybe a way of extending your work by having some work done that wouldn't cost very much or anything at all. So I think that makes sense. And in the same way, I think when I look at the quantitative data, I don't see energy. And I know that's one of our pillars. And it seems to me that that's an area where you can also range partnerships. I mean, essentially, you talk to E-Web, they'll overlay a map of the city of Eugene on their, you know, their site map, and they can give you an annual usage of water or monthly or, you know, once they set it up, it's just a trivial thing for them to forward some numbers to you once a month or once a year, whatever you prefer to get. So that would be easy with electricity and water use, which would be helpful to see if, how we're doing over time. In the city of Eugene, which is whatever our goal is, not up to Mackenzie and so forth. But you could probably, you might be able to arrange something with North East Natural Gas. Again, you know, there are public utilities and they try to be cooperative. And again, you would have to pay for it. They would, they just would sort of arrange an overlay of their natural gas consumption on the city of Eugene's map and give you a monthly or annual total, whatever you prefer. And then it would be useful to have liquid fuels. This is the only area where I could see there might be some challenges because the gasoline consumption companies may not want to share that information. But you could see, you might talk with them and maybe that if they just shared it, you know, they're not for a specific station, but just total gasoline consumption sold in the Eugene metropolitan, you know, Eugene's physical boundary. And you wouldn't worry about what's sold over the border, but at least it would give you an indication. And then with fleets, LTD, the same way, they could probably, they, I'm sure they have all this, these numbers already, but how much some bus uses that goes, you know, any bus that, you know, goes through Eugene, you'd just count, you know? But the ones that just literally don't go to Eugene at all but are in Springfield only, you wouldn't. So the fleets, too, you could get that and the state, state motor pool that serves University of Oregon, same way. So that just seems like, those are simple things to get that wouldn't require you to, you know, someone has to get the data, but all the data collection would be done by a partner. And it could be done, it seems to me, at no cost to you. It's just sort of negotiating a little, you know, you know, with these different organizations and maybe others I haven't thought of, but those are the ones that jumped out. Thanks.
If I can respond. So you'll be happy to hear that this actually was talked about quite a bit at the Technical Resource Group. We had the sustainability staff there and a member of the Sustainability Commission there. And so these same things came up. And so we're coordinating with the sustainability staff who are also collecting information. I mean, it's just one of those things where there's crossover. We've got, some of that information's helpful for transportation. There's just a lot of crossover. So who collects it, how it gets roped in? We haven't totally figured all that out yet, but those things are all on our radar.
I didn't see any additional hands. Did I miss something here? It seems like we're.
That's great.
Okay, I saw two, two hands, Commissioner Borowski and Commissioner Baker.
The next step for outreach, just, just a heads up. At our Neighborhood Association meeting, I brought up the fact this is going to be rolled out and they would love to have somebody from staff come and present at November Fairmont. So I can get you that date, if that's something that somebody would be able to do.
Yeah. We've been asked already for the 17th, I think it is.
Yeah. All right, good.
And so we, we need to start figuring out how we're going to be able to staff those things. Because as you saw, the 17th is also one of our public involvement dates, so, yeah.
Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, just a general wording thing, and I'll use an example. So I'll go to page 15. Sometimes you use rather over-the-top adjectives. And I think it would be better to tone some of them down so that, you know, people don't get a little. So like on the, the fourth paragraph, while our community has amazing access, I think you could probably find a little better word than amazing that would be more reasonable. I don't know that we have amazing access compared to other cities and, you know, I think maybe, but that's an example of where you're using really, really strong words. If there, if you think there's a potential that it might turn people off because it's sort of like so over the top, then you sort of tone it down a little bit, just in general language, so.
I believe I saw Commissioner Mills. Amazing, I was thinking awesome, but.
Thank you for all those great comments. I remind you to, don't leave after the meeting is over. See Heather to sign up for the public meetings that are in November. And I know you have more agenda items. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you for the great presentation. Looking at the agenda, we skip item number three because it's a stealth item. And we go to number four, items from commissioner and staff. Are there any other items from staff?
We've been kind of busy, so, no.
No.
Right now.
Okay, great.
Yeah. Other than, well, I suppose the only thing coming up, and it seems a little redundant to say again, but on Wednesday, of course, we're going to be presenting to council on the South Willamette Project. And again, it's just a work session, information about the project. Continues to be a lot of public discussion about that, of course. The hearing is still, or, yeah, the hearing is still scheduled for November 9th currently. Then following that, on December 14th, there would be another work session with council to discuss any thoughts they had about what happened at the hearing. So that's all out there. No changes to that. Let you know if there are, of course. Other than that, I don't believe there's anything major coming at, coming up for.
They're hearing tomorrow. They're hearing tomorrow.
Yes, right, of course. Thank you. There is that. Otherwise, otherwise, I don't think we have. Otherwise, otherwise I don't think we have any further items, just in terms of notifying folks. We did send out a poll, of course, for the, for the retreat, and we're going to buckle down and talk about what to do there. I think the chair and co-chair have some, some ideas and if other, of course, we've talked about ideas for what to do at the retreat previously, so I think we have a pretty good, a pretty good baseline for that. And so what we'll do at this point is send out maybe a tentative agenda and get comments and thoughts about what else you might want to do. So I'd say that'll, that'll come at you. We've got some time. So in the next week or two, I would say that'll come out and we can talk about it. That sounds good?
Thank you.
Sure.
Any things from commission? I have Baker and then Borowski.
Well, just a general comment. I'd appreciate it, or it would be useful to me if you sent out the schedule more frequently when we have, we have a lot of things there that are tentative, and when they get sort of dropped off, it would be useful if you sent us out an update, maybe every couple of weeks or something like that, just so we know what the current status is, because sometimes things change and we, I, you know, I, some of us have trips planned and we plan it around there not being a meeting there, and then all of a sudden, there is one and, you know, just so we have more advanced notice and we can accommodate. The other thing I was going to mention was there is a Historic Preservation, Historical Review Board meeting on December 3rd at 8:30 in, probably in this room, I think. And they did meet in the interim between their quarterly meetings to discuss, sort of partnering with Portland. Portland has a big historic preservation month in next, scheduled for next May, and they're going to do it on a Saturday, and Eugene is thinking of doing it on a Sunday afterwards. Take advantage of, and there would be events going on all month, but there would be a big, you know, big sort of event for the public plus places. And I just wanted to mention that in case anyone had any ideas or was interested to forward them to the Historic Review Board.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Borowski.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention something that, about it, that was in the packet for tomorrow night's meeting, and it actually came through on email while we're in here. There was a set of findings in there, and I was confused about them when I read them at first. They were a set of findings that were, you know, put out there, and I was a little bit put off that the staff would put findings out before we even had a public meeting. Those findings were actually created by the lawyer for the applicant. You know, it had Bill's, you know, Bill's, Bill Randall, Chair of the thing. So Kristin just emailed to, you know, said, oh, I think you've got the wrong chairperson. There is a set of findings in there, but those aren't, weren't prepared by staff and they were prepared by the applicant's attorney. So when I first read it, I was, I was a little bit put off that there was these findings already made and we hadn't even had the thing. So just kind of when you're going through your packet for tomorrow, keep that in mind, because it, it was a little bit confusing.
Any other things from commissioners? Commissioner Baker.
Well, I wasn't sure what the plan was for deliberations on that one either, because again, I didn't see anything in the schedule, and I assume we would
There's not deliberations immediately after, didn't it?
Yes, there's going to be deliberations immediately after the meeting as far as we can get, if we conclude that night or carry over to next week.
Right, but we don't know if we're going to extend, you know, continue the record. In other words, it's, I think it's, it's always good to have a backup plan, because what happens if we decide to leave the record open for a week? Or, you know, that document is this thick, you know, or maybe it's this thick, I can't remember, it's very thick. And so there may be some issues, we have to go back and refer to the, the record from that meeting. It just seems like we should have on our schedule, you know, one of our meetings set aside as a backup for deliberation.
I think we do, don't we? As I understand it, if there's a need for a meeting, it'll, it would be that subsequent Monday, and it would take priority, because there's a 120-day deadline that we're fast approaching on that.
Okay.
Any other things from commissioners?
Any update on what we talked about last week, about the meetings with counselors?
Yes, well, Commissioner Randall is one of the group.
I have met with Counselor Evans and Counselor Pryor, as well as the mayor, and just discussed the South Willamette Plan and sending that forward and trying to build relationships with council again. And so it went well.
Commissioner Kristin, who's not here today, had, had some things scheduled last week that she had mentioned. I don't know if she actually had those meetings or not. I know that, that I was assigned three. I've contacted them, I've sent out emails. We have not met yet. From what I understand, on the work session, it would, there's nothing final that'll occur there. I am encouraging them to get with me prior to that particular meeting, but if not, immediately thereafter, so that we can talk about those issues. Anything else from commissioners? I missed the last meeting. I did look at the tape on learning, how are we doing? A lot was said then. I don't know if there's anything else to be said now, because I don't know if we've learned a lot since the last meeting, but is there anything that we'd like to bring up on that? Okay. Yes, Terry?
I just have another staff update, if I may. This is about moving ahead. So the joint city of Eugene and Lane Transit District study of the, of the key corridors, council and Lane County Board of, Board of Advisors, Lane County Board of Directors, that's it. I'm sorry. The Lane Transit
Commissioners, Lane Transit.
Yes, LTD, Board of Directors. The two decision-makers on moving ahead each had a meeting October 12th and approved the recommendations of both staff group and the oversight committee, which was to advance four corridors for a study of MX and enhanced corridor alternatives in addition to a no-build, and those are Cobert Road, 30th to LCC, River Road, and Highway 99. And a fifth corridor is to be looked at just within Eugene, the Martin Luther King Corridor for enhanced, enhanced corridor only. So that was the recommendation, and you'll be hearing more about that as we go into the new year.
Just as a side, the comment, the community where I live had its annual meeting and did have the moving ahead people come down. Very informative. I attended the moving ahead briefings or workshops, and actually, there was a tremendous amount of discussion at the neighborhood meeting during that presentation. So I don't know if that's scheduled in any of the neighborhoods that you live in, but I just thought that that, they did a very good job in coming down and addressing the questions. All right, do we have anything else at this time? Hearing none, I'll adjourn the meeting. It is adjourned.